We have record reflect, we have reconvened virtually with all council members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, pretty, just as for all.
All right, I've been reconnected there. All right, I have the motion for the executive minutes of September 30th and October 14th, 2020. They have already been discussed and executive all in favor. All right, no extensions, no days. Welcome all. Feels like fall has really arrived and just as a reminder that this weekend is time to set back your clocks one hour. On behalf of Madison, I did petition that we not change our clocks because I don't think we want another hour added to the year 2020. But it's not going to happen. So we will be adding an hour to this very interesting year. But there are some good things happening and we're going to highlight some of those right now. This past Friday, we gathered on the steps of Harley-Davidson Memorial to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Madison Housing Authority. Madison was the first suburban town in New Jersey to establish a housing authority. And among the first in the country, that is very impressive, the forethought that back in 1970. And certainly from our scattered site toward senior housing, we in the Madison Housing Authority have a lot to be proud of. So congratulations to the Housing Authority for 50 years. Also celebrated on Friday was Lou Ricchio's retirement. So on December 31st, Lou will leave the office for the final time after arriving in Madison in 1981. As was pointed out, he was probably only planning to stay here five, 10 years and made it a 40-year career. His leadership and vision not only made Madison's affordable housing possible, but made the authority a leading housing authority in the country. He will be wishing Lou well. And speaking of retirement and of Lou's, Lou Cornine, Foreman for the Mechanical Service Department of BPW is retiring after 26 years. He'll be noted his retirement on Friday also. And shortly he'll be heading off to Florida with a fishing pole in hand to enjoy his next phase of life. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, our tri-town cares, our group that have been working on mental health issues throughout the pandemic and other stresses is sponsoring a week of kindness and gratitude that started today and goes through November 1st. And this is with under the premise that helping others and sharing gratitude is a great tool to help us get through stressful times. So today was a gratitude day, a day to thank others such as teachers, which will be appropriate for something coming up in just a few minutes. Please firefighters, a friend. So if you haven't had a chance to show gratitude, you know, after this meeting, shoot off an email or make a phone call to say thank you. Tomorrow, for example, is neighbor day. And so go ahead and say hello to a neighbor or even a stranger. Or, you know, help someone in the needs such as rake and leave for a senior. And if you go to our tri-town cares org or tri-town cares Facebook page, you'll find more information on this, including things to do on each of the remaining days of this week. And a reminder that Halloween is on in Madison unless we are directed by the state otherwise. Of course, there will not be a downtown parade and no truck retreat, but you can go out. But if you do trick or treating, please remember the following. Halloween mask is not a medical mask. So wear your mask under your scary mask and keep the mask on so you don't touch your face after getting candy. Stay in your own neighborhood if possible. And of course, if that's not possible, stay in both a neighborhood with friends or nearby. Do not trick or treat in other towns. And go out with your family or regular friends. And when you do get back home, keep that candy around for at least overnight before you touch it and wash your hands. I know that's going to be a challenge, but we can do it. And on Friday, this past Friday, October 16th, we had our Affordable Housing Settlement fairness hearing with Judge Gauss. And while the hearing was continued, it was a very positive session. We should be wrapping up in December. We will have a town hall meeting and please mark your calendars. This will be a Zoom on Wednesday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. The details will be posted on our website and through social media. The meeting will cover the plan for Madison's meeting our obligations, including the concept and site for the 40-unit 100% affordable housing. And before I get to this next section, like we're going to be calling up some of our guests. I just had a hot news flash, a happy anniversary to Carmella and Sal Whitebally who are celebrating anniversary today. Not a better way to celebrate anniversary than in Zoom.
57 years. Do you believe that?
57 years, so.
I was a child bride.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Give our best to Sal too, and make sure you get a chance to celebrate. So I'd like to bring in our representatives from Board of Ed to talk a little bit about the National Merit semifinalists and commended students. And we'll explain it and then we'll recognize our students that many of whom are on board here. We have Mark coming up. There's Alex, one of our sippings, there is our superintendent. Got a few more that we'll be adding on here.
Well, while we're waiting for everyone, I just want to say good evening. Thank you, Mayor Conley, and thank you, members of the Borough Council. It's great to have, thank you so much for honoring our students tonight. It's great to be here with all of you. I hope that you're all healthy and well. That's the way we live in. But it's great to be with you all here tonight. Thank you so much for taking the time and thank you for our students who are able to attend. And thank you and congratulations to all our students as well. With me tonight is Dan Ross. He is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Personnel. And he's going to share a few things about the National Merit Scholarship Program and the National Merit Scholar Program and a little bit of information about the students who are being honored.
Thanks, Mark. And to council members, thank you so much for having us. It's really wonderful to have the ability to speak with you tonight. The National Merit Scholar Program is, and my apologies for my camera. But the National Merit Scholars Program is a program based on the PSAT and MSQT assessment, which is taken by 11th graders across the country. And the National Merit Scholars Recognition has a couple of components to it. And basically, students are compared their scores against students across the country. And there are certain criteria that are met that allow students to participate in the program that results in potential for scholarship funding as well as just national recognition. And so we're very proud to have our students who are with us tonight be honored here and be recognized for their incredible work. We really owe a debt of gratitude to the incredible work at Madison High School that has gone into preparing and supporting these students throughout their time at the high school. And obviously, as students have have sort of journeyed through the K-12 experience in Madison Public Schools. And I see that Ms. Ready is here as well. And obviously want to give a huge thank you to the Madison Board of Education. Who's been very supportive for all of the endeavors that we have in place. And so I actually don't have the list of students who are being recognized. But Mayor Conley and members of the council, it really is just wonderful that we can have this partnership where the students of the district can be recognized in, you know, such an esteemed forum such as this. And we're really just very grateful for for the opportunity to bring them forward for this recognition.
Thank you. And I do have the names before I get to them. Board of Education President Heather Ready, would you like to say a few words?
Of course. Thank you very much. I just would like to echo Mr. Ross's comments about the the pride that we take in our high school students. And also, you know, for many of these students, it's the culmination of their work over the last 13 years in the district. And so having these recognitions tonight from the borough is very meaningful for us. So thank you very much for taking the time and thank you to all of our students for your hard work and for representing Madison so well on a national level. So thank you to everyone for this tonight.
Thank you. And most of our students are on board here and with their being bashful with their video off, so we may not see them. But I want to first recognize the semifinalists, which again represents less than 1% of US high school seniors, including the highest scoring entrance in each state. And our semifinalists from Madison High School, Lady Hopeerman, Henry Maradovich, Adam Chair. There's got a few of them right there. And we'll give you all recognition as I, I want to, you know, share our in addition to the three semifinalists, the 17 Madison High School seniors that were commended students in 2021. And these represent the top 3% of participants across the country. So truly commendable and representative of the hard work and that you have put in. And this is Ann Bolt, Daniel Boyer, S. Callahan, Jonathan Cho, Thomas Daley, Sophia Dantso, Ed Downing, William Hagerstrom, Patrick Hanley, Madon Huang, Alex Johnson, Ross Matos, Aiden Iceberg, Emily Ruina, Michael Shire, Cecilia Smith, and Alex Tauber. And I'll apologize if I didn't capture all those names properly. So let's give everyone a good round of applause for your job. Well done.
Good job.
And we wish you, again, not only congratulations on doing this, but best of luck going forward wherever you have, college will will take you. You have been Madison proud and we will know that you will do Madison proud in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Conley. Thank you, council members.
Thanks.
All right, we're gonna move on to reports from committees. And while we're doing that, I'm going to apologize because the heat has been turned on this building. So I'm going to take the opportunity to take off my jacket before I melt in my seat. But we'll start off as Finance and Borough Clerk, Council President Whitebally.
Thank you, Mayor. From Administration, late last week, Administration in the Finance Department submitted Madison's Best Practices Checklist to the state in New Jersey. We talked about this document at our last council meeting and were given the results. The checklist was established to encourage municipalities to improve internal controls, address statutory and regulatory compliance, and to highlight areas critical to sound municipal finance and operations. Madison scored 96%. So that's, so we got an A. And as such, we will receive 100% of our state aid. And the checklist, if you're interested in seeing it, the checklist can be found on the financial document section on rosenet.org. About two weeks ago, we got some good news from Trenton when the governor announced that Madison will get up to $198,036 in Federal Cares Act coronavirus relief funds. The borough has spent a significant amount of money on local relief programs, personal protective equipment, medical supplies, overtime for the health department nurse, staffing to monitor residents as they enter Borough Hall, protective shields and cleaning supplies. These funds will help defray those costs. Administration and the Finance Department are working on the documentation and hope to submit it to the state later this week. Administration has also finished all the internal budget meetings with the department heads. Our Chief Financial Officer, Jim Burnett, has been working with Sandy Emmerich, our Personnel Director, on the budgeting, the various salary lines in the budget. Personnel-related costs make up almost 50% of the total operating budget for the borough. Over the next two months, Ray and Jim will be working on the rest of the budget. They're also working with Bob Vogel, our engineer on the five-year capital plan. We expect to have that presentation of that document on December 14th council meeting. I'd like to encourage everyone to get involved in the budget. Listen to these budget meetings. The first one will be the, you know, the capital budget. But ongoing, there will be a series of budget meetings and introduction to each one of the departments. I've said it once and I'll say it again. This is probably the most important thing that this mayor and council does is to work on the budget. So from the tax collector, the deadline for the Senior Free's Property Tax Reimbursement Program has been extended to December 31st. Residents who were 65 years or older on December 31st, 2018, and whose total annual income in 2018 and 2019 was roughly $90,000 or less, may qualify and are encouraged to pick up the application booklet in the tax office. People get discouraged with that, that tax, that application booklet. But if you seem to be having any problems, it's a worthwhile endeavor. I'm sure somebody in the borough can possibly help you. The annual tax sale will be held on December 9th for the 2019 taxes or utility charges that are still unpaid. The official tax sale notices were mailed down on October 20th. And the list of parcels would be published in the Madison Eagle, starting on November the 12th. One final reminder, fourth quarter taxes are due on November the 1st. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to, Public Safety, Ms. Kelly.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, it is fall and it is the leaf season. So please be careful when you park your cars. Do not park them on the pile of leaves that are sitting in the roadway. And make sure that you keep fire hydrants clear and keep your car away from the fire hydrants also. And if you have a wood burning fireplace or stove that you use in your home, have the chimney cleaned and inspected annually. And only burn seasoned hardwood. That is from the Fire Department. That's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
We charged the air conditioning system on the fire engine one and repaired the Waverly clock. So the Waverly clock is now telling time again. The engineering Beverly Road and Albright Circle are completing the paving. I can tell you from personal experience, it's a beautiful thing. The AV contracting has progressed on installation of the metal doors and standing seam metal roofing on the Dodge Field Playground. The contractor has indicated that two weeks will be required on set, weather permitting, but that's coming along very well. The Environmental Commission had a meeting with environmental groups in the Chatham to discuss ways we can work together to address climate change. And then finally, we had two really awesome Eagle Scout projects completed in the last couple of weeks. The first was Keen Dean. He built a solar panel charging station at the Madison Public Library. So you can go and charge your, your, your laptop or your iPad or your phone outside the public library. And then David Amieva built benches and a picnic bench and a fire pit at the community garden. It's really lovely. So go down and check them out. Those boys are from Madison troop 25. So that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Downtown Development Commission, you've got four weeks left to go to the farmer's market on Thursdays. It ends November 19th. It's very exciting. Got great vendors this year, from 2:00 in the afternoon until 7:00. From the Chamber of Commerce, if you haven't noticed, the scarecrows are out on Waverly Place and will remain up through November 5th. The Holiday Window Painting will be completed by November 25th. Find Rosie the Rose City Reindeer Event will begin Saturday, November 28th. That's always an exciting program for adults and children of all ages. In the Madison Community Arts Center, the new entertainment series Fall Back Into the Arts continues to grow and is well attended. The remaining entertainment includes Children's Interactive Theater of the Wizard of Oz, local high school and college voices, and newly added Broadway cabaret with professional singers on October 30th and classical rock band To The Thorns on November 6th. At the November 6th concert, Have A Good Day Cafe will provide complimentary hot chocolate throughout the evening. Plans are continuing for a virtual holiday arts festival recorded at the art center to broadcast and to be broadcast in late November and December. From the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the ongrowing restoration preservation project for the James Library Building has now moved to the interior. With funding from the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust and Madison's Open Space Funds, METC Management is proceeding with the selection of bidders for the project. As anticipated, this multi-year phase will commence in early January. The museum remains open by reservation and everyone is encouraged to please call and make a reservation and go visit the library. I mean, the museum, excuse me. The museum's annual benefit will take place virtually this year. 2020 Vision, it's called, will be an evening to celebrate many of the schools and students from around the state who have participated in, in the museum's educational programs and virtual field trips. A few special guests will participate, including a special surprise Broadway star making an appearance. All proceeds directly benefit the museum's education program. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
The Health Department has already conducted several flu clinics serving Madison, Chatham Township and Springfield. Our last scheduled clinic is tomorrow, October 27th in Madison. At this time, all available appointments for that clinic are filled. However, the Health Department is looking at additional clinic dates pending the availability of additional vaccine. Updates will be available via Borough Social, Borough Social Media and on rosenet.org. If you haven't gotten your flu shot yet, and especially if your insurance allows you to receive a free flu vaccine from your doctor or pharmacy, get your flu shot in the coming weeks sooner rather than later. For a few COVID-related updates, as of today, Madison reports 210 total cases of COVID-19. That is 18 new cases since our last meeting. 15 cases remain open and are still being monitored by the Health Department. The Madison Health Department continues to work closely with the school district, providing support through consultation, guidance and public health investigations. As our numbers indicate, Madison is not immune to the uptick in cases even throughout our state, seen throughout our state and in our country. So we must remain vigilant even when interacting with our friends and extended, extended family outside our immediate household. The list of states and US territories included in New Jersey's travel advisory has increased to 39. However, given the current case rate in New Jersey, current guidance is limit interstate travel to and from New Jersey as much as possible. If you don't need to travel out of state, simply stay home. As Mayor Conley said, with Halloween this weekend, guidance that he reviewed is on rosenet.org. Remember, the choices we make can have a major impact on the lives of our friends and neighbors. They can also impede our community's ability to operate schools, recreation programs and stay Madison strong. Continue to wash your hands, use face coverings, practice social distancing and stay home and get tested if you don't feel well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Early.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, the tree trimming crews have completed line clearance on Park Lane and Dellwood Park and are now starting on another section of Woodland Road. The department set a new pole and anchor at 55 Fairview Ave for a new home with underground service. And the layout for new poles, transformers and wire upgrades on Rosewood Drive, Crestwood Drive and Linwood Place is in progress. Plans and layout are also in progress to install 5,000 feet of fiber optic telecommunications wire to be installed between the Kings Road Substation and the James Park Substation. Both electric crews assisted American Electrical Testing Company at the Kings Road Substation recently to complete testing on equipment there. The department is researching upgrading the commercial district LED light poles to LED lamps or installing retrofit kits on the lamp posts. And finally, the electric department energized the new electric vehicle charging station in the library parking lot. It's a good compliment to the new charging station installed by our Eagle Scout. From the Water Department, the Madison Water Department's annual fire hydrant and water main flushing program has been completed. All hydrants have been operated, tested and flushed. And with the information collected during this process, hydrant repair or replacement can now begin. An outside contractor Liquid Engineering has performed an internal inspection of the Madison Avenue and Midwood Terrace water storage tanks. Both tanks are in good condition with only minor corrosion on the inside and outside and minor repairs needed to the vent cap of the Madison Avenue Tower. The upcoming report will determine when we will need to schedule painting for both of those tanks. And finally, with the cold weather approaching, the department would again like to remind customers to have the irrigation systems winterized and to remove all hoses from your outside faucets. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor and Council received three emails. First one was October the 15th from John Hinahan of Kensington Road regarding a police 911 response at a neighbor's home. Another email on October the 19th from Thomas Markanowicz of Farm Park regarding the protective shields recently approved for purchase for the Police Department. And an email dated October the 26th from resident Pat Rowe, Pine Avenue, who raised concern regarding spending funds. He raised concern to consider not spending funds on, on anything that's not critical to the operation of the borough.
Thank you. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is always is limited. So I'll be opening this up to opportunity to ask questions or make comments on any discussion item that is on our discussion agenda or the resolutions. There will be another invitation for discussion later in the meeting for, on any subject. And if this will work, if you are online, you raise your hand by clicking the hand. And if you're on the phone, you can be recognized by hitting star nine. But note for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or a call without a phone number identified. When you are recognized and unmuted, you must first state your name and address before starting any comments. Failure to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. And please state the agenda item and or the resolution you're commenting on. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. But we do give you a one-minute grace period and you will be stopped at four minutes. And so as not to take time from your, your comments will capture your questions and either answer when you're done or during the agenda discussion item. And these are the items you may comment on. And again, if you want to comment on other things, you have to wait until our next comment period coming a little bit later in the meeting. But you may comment on the YMTA presentation. YMTA is one of our partner organizations related to Team Center and also Project Unity Pride. And you may also comment on the following resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. So when we get to consent agenda, you also know that they're, they're included here. Resolution 258 is appointing Christopher McDougall to position a mechanical foreman of our Mechanical Service Department of Public Works, as I mentioned before, Lou Cornine's retirement. Resolution 259, awarding contract to absolute fire protection for the purchase of a popper. And this is not to exceed $820,000, but 979. And should be noted that it's the hard work of our fire chief and others that we were able to take quite a bit off of the cost of that item. Resolution 260 has been retired. item. Resolution two sixty has been retired. Um, and was withdrawn. Resolution two sixty-one is authorizing use of spaces in the public parking lot at the Civic Center for the Thursday Morning Club on November thirteenth and fourteenth for the Bazaar Noel. Resolution two sixty-two is approving a raffle license for Rotary uh Club, Madison Rotary Club. Actually, it's uh the District seven-four, seven-five doing a monthly raffle next year. Resolution two sixty-three approving temporary signs for five days of action sponsored by the Madison Area YMCA. Resolution two sixty-four is rescinding resolution two fifty-two and authorizing contracts to Rio Supply under the Morris County Co-op uh for uh water meters and dat- data recorders. And this is uh in excess of the seventeen thousand five hundred um what normal limit, but it's under the uh co-op agreement. Resolution two sixty-five is authorized use of competitive contracting for gateway wayfinding signage systems. And this is uh he had in there eighty-five thousand. Uh, resolution two sixty-six is permitting continued use of public streets and parking areas for outdoor dining. Uh, it was supposed to end November first. We're now extending it through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. So um uh doing during this crisis. People can still dine outdoors. Resolution two sixty-seven is uh amending the professional services contract for well A and B design additions to Martin Donald Incorporated, and this is not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. Resolution two sixty-eight is amending resolution uh two forty-nine that authorized the use of community pool park lots by Morris Elite Soccer Club for a equipment swap. This is now uh scheduled for November fourteenth and fifteenth. Resolution two sixty-nine is authorizing use of thirty thousand eight hundred dollars of open space money for design guidelines for historic preservation commission. This will help assist uh those who own historic properties. Resolution two seventy is supporting a grant application by the Morris County Parks Commission to complete the traction line for the pedestrian walkway and bike trail. This is the extension of the traction line that now um terminates at Danforth and would be extended to um uh Elm Street if if they are able to get the grant. So this is just supporting the grant. Uh, and resolution two seventy-one appointing uh Karadad Reyes to the full-time position of deputy borough clerk. And resolution two seventy-two is authorized the adoption of a twenty twenty Morris County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So you may comment on those resolutions or the YMCA agenda item. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. Being none, I close this part of the meeting. Oh, I do have a hand up. Well, uh, we will bring uh Joe up. Again, state your name and address and the agenda item that you were commenting on, agenda item or the um uh resolution.
Yeah, this is Joe of the Air Truck, five Beach Avenue, Madison. Um, on resolution two seventy.
Yes.
Okay, um, the Borough Council may remember that in twenty twelve residents of Beach Avenue in the Oakdale neighborhood opposed the extension of the traction line behind Beach Avenue and behind Crestwood Drive from Danforth Road to Elm Street. There were multiple reasons for this. And that was because of removing a lot of the uh greenery and trees, the expense. And because of uh water issues, storm uh storm sewer issues. So I'm surprised to see this up again. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and this little background uh goes correct. It was um when the county was back here uh several years ago, at that time, the council did not show support. Um this is only for the actual grant. One of the things that I think this council and a future council would be committed to is to make sure that if it goes forward, that uh we work together with the county to mitigate um any impact on the neighborhood such as making sure it's designed to preserve as much as screening as possible. Uh, like the county does own the property of the traction line that goes between Danforth and um Elm Street and um we uh know there may have been some encroachments also on that property by the residents. And so the county would be work with the county to make sure that things are moved back to where they need to be and proper fencing and um the like is put in there. So uh we uh certainly have heard from the neighbors and whatever we do would be a commitment to uh minimize impact to the neighborhood and also kind of work with the greater good of uh providing this connection uh from the traction line to what really becomes um uh downtown Madison, as it's much easier on a bicycle to go from Elm Street to uh downtown than it is if you uh come down Danforth or one of the other neighborhoods. So um you will be working together. Um, this is just the uh the grant application and will let you the certainly be notified in the neighborhood if the county is successful. Anyone else wishing to comment on any of the agenda items? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we move on to our agenda discussions. I'll uh ask Deb Cohen, who is liaison to Health, is also the liaison to the YMCA is one of our partner organizations.
Uh, so Diane Mann is here on behalf of the YMCA to discuss um the teen center. She came last year um and they requested twelve thousand dollars to help keep the teen center going. Obviously, COVID had a huge impact on what they could do. So in talking with her over the past few weeks, it was decided we should do an update with what they've been doing briefly, but more importantly, how with the continuation of COVID and indoor restrictions, how they're going to um continue to provide for the teens of ma- teens and youth of Madison.
Great. Um, thank you, Councilmember uh Cohen. Um, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Diane Mann. I live at number one Noe Avenue in Madison. I'm the CEO of the YMCA, and as you know, we have buildings at one eleven Kings Road and at fifty-four East Street, both in Madison. Um, Councilmember Cohen had reached out earlier this month, and I was glad that she did. Uh, to have an opportunity to tell you how we are operating our teen programs. But I also wanted to take the opportunity to say a public uh and very heartfelt thank you to the borough leadership for its support to all businesses in Madison over the last six months, but especially on, in my case, to the Madison Area YMCA. Um, as I wrote in my letter to the council, um, we learned in May that our site for summer camp wasn't going to be available to us at the Drew University Campus. Um, the the university had determined that they needed to close all of the grounds, including the indoor buildings. So we were without a site. Um, as you know, the Kirby Children's Center is at fifty-four East Street, right across from the Lucy D. Anthony uh sports field. And so we reached out to the borough. Um, we knew that we could have weather shelter and restrooms at the Kirby Center, and we could host camp theoretically at the Lucy D. Anthony Field. And the borough could not have been more cooperative and helpful in making that happen uh on a shared arrangement. So we could share that with the other sports uh and recreation team users for the summer. Um, we were able to host forty uh twenty fifty-nine individual campers. Um, and they were all divided into pods of no more than ten campers with dedicated staff. And they didn't move across those individual groups for the duration of camp. Um, so the site worked out beautifully. And the point of that is that the working families who needed care for their school age kids during the summer were able to have it thanks to the borough. So we are sincerely grateful. Um, and then uh Mayor Conley can attest, as can Michael Fitzpatrick. Um, I've reached out many times for advice on and help in interpreting the state guidelines for public health. How the Y Family Center on Kings Road could reopen and assure that we were compliant and meeting all the state uh standards for safety, for checks at the front door, temperatures, interviews, distancing, mask wearing, et cetera. And on countless occasions, the mayor and Michael Fitzpatrick have been responsive and even willing to come and look at our facility and our layout and give us advice. Uh, so a public and very heartfelt thank you to the borough for its support. I know that you've been doing this for any number of businesses in town. We're all facing enormous challenge as our revenue has been hit very, very hard. So thank you for all of your, all of your effort and your energy. Uh, the other reason I'm here tonight in response to uh Councilmember Cohen's request is to talk about the status of our teen programs. And as you saw in the report I sent, we started the year with some pretty good numbers. We had dozens of uh teens coming in, pre-teens and teens coming into the family center to visit the teen center in our various programs in January and February. We had to close the family center on March sixteenth, and that's where you saw that the numbers really drop. Um, at that time, we really needed to move to an online format, and that's where we really didn't have the kind of success that we had had up into that time. You'll remember in March and April, schools were trying to convert to more online uh and distance learning. Uh, most of us who are employed during the day were were trying to figure out how to move our our permanent offices home. Uh, we were competing against all of that to try to stay in touch with our teens. So our online program offerings were not that well attended. We had just five uh teen leaders participating in the spring. Uh, we had a cohort in youth and government of only six students. They are continuing, and I'll say more about that in a minute. And then we tried to do teen scene online. Uh, we offered four evenings of what what's normally our live Friday night teen scene. And we had just a handful, five or six uh participants for the online. Um, so spring was not a great success for us. The youth and government cohort has continued to be together. Um, as you recall from earlier reports. Um, this is a model legislature. Uh, the students had started to draft their legislation in January and February. And we gave them the option to continue the whole thing online for the rest of the semester, and they opted to hold off. They really wanted to wait to see if there would be an opportunity later in the year for them to come together with their peers, uh, with their families, with the community to present their legislation live and do do a debate um as the program is modeled to do. We're still hopeful that that might happen, but it but we haven't gotten there just yet. Um, so as I said, we were able to do summer camp with thanks to the borough. Um, out of that summer camp group, we had twelve older teens who were able to go through our leadership in training program, leaders in training program. That allows them a two-week job training supervision workshop. Um, that then allows them to participate in backing up the staff during summer camp. They helped to supervise uh the students, uh, do behavior uh modification and so forth. And this year, uh, they got the special additional skill of knowing how to reinforce the distancing standards and to back us up as we were doing daily health checks at camp. Uh, so we felt that was worthwhile. Um, Councilmember Cohen had asked me to look forward. What are we going to do in twenty twenty-one and how are we going to navigate? Um, the first and most important thing we're looking forward to doing is continuing to be compliant with the state health standards. The Y has always aspired to be a wellness organization. And we need to make sure that we're modeling all of the health standards in all of our buildings and all of our programs. So compliance will continue to be number one. Next month, we'd like to try two things. Some limited in-building, face-to-face teen programs to the extent that our building can accommodate. Normally, we would locate our teen center for that, but if you've seen it, it's the size of a racquetball court. It means that not too many teens could be there in a safe distance, even with masks on. So we'll be looking for space throughout the family center um at the appropriate time, afternoon, after schools and evenings when we could have teens actually in the building. We'd like to next month recruit and launch a new cohort of teen leaders um that would go through a five-month program, no fee, um that would continue until May. Um, this would ideally be a mix of face-to-face and online. Um, we're going to continue to see how we adapt, watching the trends of uh the transmission rate and what the uh health standards allow us to do. As we enter the flu season, we all know we're we're more or less on guard if we're going to have to step back any of this. So we'll be ready to adapt. Uh, but we would like to do those two things next month, some in-building and a new teen leaders uh cohort. Then in December, we would like to resume something we were doing face-to-face in the first two months of the year. And that is tutoring with students who come from families where Spanish is their first language. That may well adapt itself to a full online uh uh program. We'd like to try that starting in December and see if that can work. We believe that it probably can. Um, and then going forward into twenty twenty-one, I think it will be an exercise in innovation uh and being opportunistic to adapt rapidly to what the health standards allow us to do. We'll continue to work in partnership with the junior school. Our contact there, Brooke Phillips, the assistant principal, has been a strong partner in letting us know what's going on in the teen population and helping us get word out to the students. Um, Councilmember Cohen has also encouraged me to deepen our relationship with uh Dave Drexel at the high school. So we can raise awareness among the high school students about their opportunity for volunteerism and earning volunteer hours for honor students um in the coming year. We'd love to do all those things together. Um, funding, uh, let me say a few things about that because I do know that the that the challenge you're facing on the municipal budget is very significant this year. Most of us who are running businesses, those of you who run government, know that we have taken a huge economic hit. Uh, my sympathies are completely with you. I understand you've got a million and a half of a revenue shortfall to try to make up somehow in the budget. I appreciate that and understand it. Um, we also have a significant budget shortfall uh in revenue this year at the Y. Um, normally, the teen programs uh at the Y are uh are um paid for, if you will, by operating revenue that comes to us through our membership. This year, our membership revenue is cut by about fifty percent. Uh, we're down significantly in that revenue. Uh, and like other businesses, we've trimmed as much as we can this year. We've tried to be strategic and not do it with a with a blunt instrument. And one of the things that that has required is looking very carefully at the people we could not easily replace. Those people include our teen program staff members who are trained specifically to work with adolescents, uh, pre-teens to understand their social emotional development and what they specifically need. So as we have trimmed back our staff, we've worked very hard to keep our teen staff intact. It's a full-time person and a variety of part-time uh staff members. So the funding that has come from the borough has directly helped us to pay for their salaries in the past. And that's going to be more important than ever in twenty twenty-one and beyond. Um, so let me just say how grateful we are for your support and your consideration. I know as you go into the budget hearings, it's going to be very difficult. And I would just hope that you would keep us in mind for this funding as we try to recover in twenty twenty-one. Um, I'll stop and see if there are questions.
Great. Questions and comments from the council, Deb?
Thanks, Diane. I appreciate it and I'm glad to hear that you guys have wheels turning um and even possibly getting the teens in for a little bit of face-to-face um tutoring. Just a couple of questions, one of which I brought up last year and mentioned to you on the phone as well. I I'm still looking for that PR piece from the Y for students to get involved that so that they know what's going on. Um, I I just, I feel that's still a weak point. Um, and the ELL tutoring, I guess the two questions I have, and I realize it would take some time to get it up. So this may be why with the holidays and teacher convention. If you could get it up sooner than December, I think that'd be great. Um, again, how will students find out about it, both those that are able to tutor and those that need tutoring? Um, and I I strongly encourage you, like I said on the phone about the elementary school connection, those parents are in desperate need. Um, for some in-person, if it can be pulled off, but definitely some virtual um connections with students that on one hand could be tutoring, but also could be um uh, you know, other entertainment things. It could be group zooms, you know, the screen time becomes the problem with the the zooms, and I get that. So that might be um a little difficult. And then something that has come to our attention since we've talked is that the borough may not be able to use the school gymnasiums for the winter rec programs as they have in the past for basketball. Um, and uh that sort of thing due to the pandemic. And, you know, since the programs didn't run this year, um, it'd be great if we could set up a partnership where the borough can use those for the rec programs, either at the Kirby Center and or the Family Center, obviously working out schedules depending on what you guys all have planned. Um, so that we can continue to offer these um important programs, which are at least keeping the kids active for as long as indoor sports are able to happen, if they're able to happen, um, you know, this winter. Um, so those are, those are my questions, which again surround mostly um the the PR and also making sure you get the elementary school tutoring thought of and just a heads up, Brooke. And just a heads up, Brooke Phillips is now the acting principal of the Madison Junior School. She's no longer vice principal. Um, she's transitioned.
Perfect, terrific. That's great. Thank you. Um, with regard to the um limited use of the school gymnasiums, can you say more about that? I assume that means um the density would be too high. Is that the issue?
I believe um from the little bit I know, and unfortunately all of our school representatives have left, but if my district's any indication. They don't want anything happening in the schools that is not directly related to the school. So they're not. We're not letting anybody, any outside groups. And even though the rec department is not an outside group, it's not run by the school. So they don't want to, the responsibility of. It, is it being cleaned? Is it being sanitized? Cause they are bringing kids into the building. So it seems to be pretty standard practice with the schools that. Anything extra, they're giving up that revenue, um, although they had to deal with the borough um. About that anyway, but it doesn't matter what the programs are. They're just not letting anybody into the buildings.
Understood. That's good to know. Thank you for sharing that with me. Um, a couple of things with regard to the PR and getting the word out. Deb, you might have noticed your, your incoming uh your feed today. We've added you as a member of. Uh, the Madison YMCA, so you'll get all of our newsletters, our social media, et cetera, et cetera. I would be happy to put all members of the council um on that, so you can see what goes out. Um, we will be working increasingly directly with the school leadership to use them to help get word out. Uh, for example, as you know, as we mentioned, that the scholarship, the honor society students, their opportunity to do volunteer work with the Y. Um, so we'll be trying to take leadership um and guidance from the schools. Uh, to get the word out more directly to the students. We've done that, I think fairly effectively in the elementary and middle schools. Directly bringing kids over, but if you can't see it, that means we're not quite there. So we'll continue to work on that. Um, we are trying to elevate our presence um on social media without being overbearing. Um. As a YMCA, we want to be a support rather than. The center of the, of the dialogue on social media, but we will look at ways we can do that more fully. So point well taken.
And I would just say, and then I'll be quiet and let others speak is with the social media, I think right now, parents um. And I'm going to put Councilwoman Erlich on the spot with younger children. Um, and I know she's in a different situation, but are looking for anything and social media is where a lot of the parents are. Um, and that's where they're getting their information. So while under normal circumstances, you might be right about trying to. Monitor that I think right now, any programs you have that you can push out. Um, there's Madison Area Family and Events, there's the Madison Area Parents Group, there's Madison Small Businesses. We're all monitoring them to see what's out there and what can we get our kids to do that is not sitting. In front of a screen or if it's sitting in front of a screen, it's sitting in front of a screen engaging with, you know, kids their own age in different ways that are not academic.
A, a, any other questions or comments for Diane and the YMCA? Right. Well, thank you for uh carving out time to bring us up to date. Uh, as we've said many times, the Y is a great partner in the community and uh. Especially at times like this, it um, it helps Madison get through very difficult uh. Threat here. So thank you for everything and please uh pass our best and onto the staff for all they're doing.
Thank you, I will.
All right, we uh now move on to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title. And passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Wednesday, September the thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
And just a reminder, our last meeting was also a Wednesday, so those that uh were introduced at. Point will be, have a here in our next meeting. I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read. Dead ordinances by title. Ordinance thirty-four dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter fifty-nine, section fifty-nine dash fifteen of the Borough Code and title fees regarding. Dog and cat licenses to increase fees.
Mayor, I move ordinance.
Actually, I'm sorry, we're, we're missing our uh. Yeah, we're missing. We're missing our statement, so I, I open the hearing. Is there anyone in the public to comment on that uh? Ordinance, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I close the hearing now you can.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-four dash twenty twenty.
A second.
Any further council discussion?
Mayor, I just want to remind people that this ordinance does do a slight increase, but also allows you to get multi-year. Licenses so that you can get it every three years in conjunction with your rabies shot for your pet rather than having to renew yearly. And there is a slight discount for that.
Thank you for, thank you for that. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Burn.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-four dash twenty twenty adopted and. And finally passed and asked the clerk to publish notice there in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance thirty-five dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Fund. For the construction of a two-family house at seven Elm Street, Madison by HQM Properties.
I open the hearing to the public. Any wish, the comment, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Uh, Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-five dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Burn.
Yes.
It's Cohen. Oh, Mr. Hoover, my apologies. Mr. Hoover.
Right, yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
And Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-five dash twenty twenty adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of it in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating eighty-five thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund. For the purchase and installation of borough-wide wayfinding signs and gateway signage.
I open the hearing for ordinance twenty thirty-six dash twenty twenty and I would wish to comment in the public, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Uh, Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? This is Austin.
Yes, um, Mayor, I just wanted to say that we, we had um an email regarding um ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty tonight. And um, this I feel is an important step for our downtown businesses. They've been hit. So hard with COVID that um, this is just one step to help our town recover. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John, you had your hand up and then Carmella?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, this has been recommended by Urbanomics back in two thousand seventeen. And we at the DDC have been working on it since two thousand nineteen. I think this is one of the most important spends we can make this year. With all the reasons that Austria said, plus attracting people to downtown. We've got to improve the way we look. And I think by doing wayfinding signs, uh, it's going to really help a lot. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. And Carmella?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a point that um, you know, uh, we, we were named the uh best town to live in. In the state of New Jersey. And these are some of the reasons that uh we're named that. Uh, it's important um to make sure that we continue. To help our businesses and um, I, I, I think that, you know, thank uh thanking the Downtown Development Commission. And uh Lisa Ellis for bringing this forward. It's something that we have to continually move. Um, I, I know the uh, you know, the statement was made that we, we might have a budget problem. But I, I think that people have to understand that we have a lot to think about besides. Um, uh, just, you know, tunneling in uh with certain budget items. And this is a very important, uh, this is a very important aspect is to make sure that this town looks. As wonderful as it does and continues to improve. So I am definitely. Going to encourage uh everybody to say yes with this. Thank you.
Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Yes.
And we've had a little blip there, yes. I declare ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty adopted and finally passed and asked the clerk to publish notice there in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And as I mentioned before, ordinance is thirty-seven and thirty-eight, which uh were introduced our last meeting, but uh. Did not have the publication uh timeframe in there. We'll have a hearing date on November ninth. And now we are on to our second of uh invitations for discussions. This is when you may comment on any topic. The same guidelines approved uh are in place, which um try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but we will like give you a one-minute grace period. If you want to speak, please uh click on hand. And when you are recognized, uh, state your name and address uh as your first things uh. That you uh share before you start your comments. Otherwise you may be disconnected. Anyone wish to comment, please raise your hand now. Okay, seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we now go on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, November the ninth, two thousand twenty. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand twenty, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating three hundred and forty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund. For the purchase of a truckless skid steer and front end loader.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty dash thirty-nine dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Burn.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
All right, we now move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Uh, Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions are two fifty-eight, twenty twenty to R two fifty-nine, twenty twenty. And then R two sixty-one, twenty twenty to two seventy-two, twenty twenty.
Second.
As notary uh outlined, all those resolutions, any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Burn.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
The current fund, five million eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven dollars and ten cents. General capital fund, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, fifty-seven cents. Electric operating fund, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. For the electric capital fund, two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars even. Water operating fund, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, forty cents. And for the trust, one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, ninety-six cents. The total is six million, nine hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Uh, Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Burn.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
All right, there is no uh new business outside of a reminder for everyone to have a happy and. Safe Halloween. If you go out trick-or-treating, follow, follow guidelines and a reminder that um. If you haven't melded in your ballots, no matter how they're filled out, please do so or take advantage of the um. Uh, Dropbox that is behind public safety in the commuter parking lot. And with that.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much all. Take care.
Good night now.